Bonsoir, bienvenue à la réunion plénière du 10 juillet. Welcome to the committee of a whole on the 10th of July. Ms. Parker, do we have any declaration of conflict of interest?
There were no conflicts of interest declared.
Okay, before we continue, there's a site change to the agenda. Section three, three point one to three point six will be removed and brought back at another date. Okay, so we do have a few presentation this evening. On a quelques présentations ce soir. So we will start with Mr. Patrick Crossman. All right. Yep, you can go straight to the mic, Mr. Crossman, and I will give you... There, you've got the mic ready.
Okay, well, yeah, the reason I'm here is because I guess I'm breaking the city bylaw. And I disagree with the bylaw, so that's why I came here to debate it, I guess. The bylaw was the... It's about the garbage bins that... Like, I leave my garbage bin at the road. I don't ever bring it back towards my property because I find it's too heavy. My joints bother me, and it's that jerking motion there. I find that it's a problem, so just whenever I have like a grocery bag of garbage, whatever, I just take it to my bin, I walk to the road. It's more time consuming, but it's just... It's better for me. And actually, I've been doing that for about eight years, probably, or whenever the bin law came out. I've been doing it ever since then. Because I... And I don't know why, but suddenly, whatever it was, about two weeks ago, the bylaw officer came, and then they started complaining. So I... I mean, I've been... Like I said, I've probably been doing it for about eight years. I don't understand why now it's suddenly such a big problem. And so the officer told me to do this, so I'm here. Like, I actually read the by... I've never read it before, but there's a couple things... I mean, there's other things in this bylaw I'm completely breaking. Because, I mean, it says here, "No owner of a dwelling house shall suffer or permit a container containing garbage to remain upon the premises under his or her control for a period exceeding fourteen days without placing the contents for collection as set out in section three of this bylaw." Well, if I have dry garbage or something in a container in my kitchen, you know, I mean, it could stay there for a month. I'm not gonna take it to the road in four, fourteen days because of that law. So there's another one I'm breaking there, I guess. Anyways, that's not changing, so... And I just don't understand either why the law even exists. Like, when I asked the officer that, he didn't have a good answer. He basically said "looks." Well, I mean, that's stupid. That's vanity. Like, that doesn't make any sense. It's not a reason to have a bylaw for looks. Well, unless it's, you know, like a dead animal or something, okay. But I mean, the bins don't look bad. There's nothing wrong with the look of the bin. Like, it... Looks makes no sense. So I don't understand why the ball... But that particular bylaw exists. Actually, there's something else in the bylaw, too, that doesn't really make any sense. And quite frankly, I may actually be not even breaking the bylaw, as it says here, "The empty container and any material not collected shall be removed by the..." Oh, wait, let me start over here. "The empty container, yeah, and any material not collected shall be removed by the owner of the dwelling house by 8:00 p.m. in the evening of the day of collection." That's in section... Oh, maybe I should have been saying that, the sections and stuff.
No, that's okay. It's public information.
But like, the word there they use is "removed." Like, what does that even mean?
So basically, what it is, is that my house...
Can mean anything.
I can put my garbage out after 8:00 p.m. at night. So I always put it out in the evening in case I miss it in the morning.
Yeah.
So after 8:00 p.m., I put my garbage or my recycling at the road. And then, when I come back from work, recycling has gone by, or the garbage has gone by. And as long as it's picked up before 8:00 p.m., then you pick it up. So when I finish work, I pick up my garbage bin and I bring it back to the front of my house. That's what they're saying is remove it, is to take it and to bring it back to the front of your house.
But it doesn't say that in the bylaw. It just says "removed." So technically, if I move the bin two feet to the right, it's been removed. It's no longer in its former location.
So I...
So the wording there doesn't even work. Like, that's a problem, in my opinion.
Okay. I certainly understand how you feel. And, you know, let's go there this winter, for example, if everybody starts leaving their garbage at the road. But we're gonna have one hell of a mess if there's a snowstorm and things need to get picked up, so...
It's never been a problem for me, though, because I keep it far enough back that when the snowplow goes by, it's not a problem. And also, like I said, I've been doing this for eight years. Nobody ever said anything. Just suddenly now, it's an issue. I mean, it's... Like I said, it's because of my joint spot. I mean, like, I don't golf. I haven't been golfing in fifteen years. I can't. And it's not an issue of weight. It's that sort of that jerking, twisting motion is the problem. I mean, it's also a problem, too, for... Like, I don't understand if you're... If you're like eighty years old, those bins are heavy. Like, how does an eighty-year-old person get the bin to the road? I don't understand. If you just let them... If you can get some kind of exception or some kind of slip or whatever, pass or whatever that you can get, then the person who's eighty years old can take their little grocery bag, they can walk it to the road, just put it, you know, and put it in the bin. How does an eighty-year-old person... Like, that's... The law is discriminatory. That's discrimination, because you basically... The eighty-year-old person needs to go and get somebody to help them with their garbage, or they can't live in Bathurst. I mean, that's asinine.
Well, I think anywhere that lives in New Brunswick or anywhere else that have garbage bins, they have to take it and bring it back.
But not everybody does that. See, that's the thing. Those bins are huge. Not everybody is... Like, I know somebody in Ontario, and they don't do that there, probably for that exact reason, because an eighty-year-old person could never do it. They have smaller containers. So I think there should be exceptions that should be made for that, and people can, you know, apply for an exception at the city or something like that.
All right, so your request is duly noted. We'll bring it to Ms. Parker, and we will come back with... Follow up with you.
Well, all right. I mean, I did have a couple other things I could probably say. Like, I mean, I know in some places, I know there's for sure... I mean, I didn't even look for it, but I know in one place in Baldur, the city will go on... The city will drive down private property to get the bin. I've known that's... I know a place in Baldur that does that, and also in Beresford. There's another place where the city will drive onto private property and get the bins. I don't know if it's because the owners... Well, in the one situation, Baldur, the owner worked out a deal there with the city because, well, it's me. But the one in Beresford is like that as well, I believe. I know somebody who lives at that place, and the city goes... This truck goes on to private property to go get the bin. The bin doesn't have to be brought to the road. So exceptions can be made, period. Let's see, what else here? Oh, well, the other thing, too, it's not... It's a little bit not related to this particular issue, but I don't understand either why we do... Why is it garbage every two weeks and recycling every two weeks? Like, who is recycling that much junk? Like, if you eat healthy, there's nothing to recycle. So I don't understand, like, it should be maybe three garbage pickups and one recycling? Because, I mean, I don't know. I mean, if you eat healthy, there's a couple egg cartons to recycle every two weeks.
I have more recycling than I have garbage. I have more recycling because I recycle every box, every mark... Milk carton, everything that comes out that I can put in that recycling bin goes in that recycling bin.
Well, then you're not eating healthy.
Cereal box goes in recycling bin.
Well, you're not eating healthy, then. Because if you're eating fresh meat, there's nothing to recycle. Fresh fruit, there's nothing to recycle. Fresh vegetables, there's nothing to recycle. If you're drinking city water, there's nothing to recycle. So what the hell are you eating?
Well, must be eating junk.
I guess so, apparently. Apparently.
Lots of pizza, yeah, pizza boxes.
Apparently.
Yeah.
Well, and... Let's see. Oh, and the other thing, too, is like, even if you were to put in the policy, like, the bin has to be brought back to your property or something like that, that's not gonna work either. Like, the wording is gonna be tricky, and "remove" doesn't... I mean, the way the law is right there, I'm following the rule, so I go to court for it. But the other thing, too, is you can't say, "Well, remove back to the property." Like, just on my drive over here on St. George, there's a property there. It's probably ten feet from the road, and the bins are right in the front. Well, of course they are, because where is he gonna put them? Like, I mean, so if you're saying it's on... Like, so sometimes people can't even follow this bylaw that makes this worded incorrectly. So, I mean, I don't... I don't understand. I don't understand any of this. Nothing makes any sense in this situation, in my opinion.
Okay. All right, so we've taken your request, and we will follow up with you.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, should I stay or...
You can leave or you can stay. That's certainly your choice.
I'm... I'll need to stay first.
Okay.
La deuxième présentation qu'on a, c'est du centre-ville de Bathurst par le président Sylvain Lagassez. Monsieur Lagassez. Le micro vous apporte.
Bonjour tout le monde. Je ne sais pas si vous êtes connectés directement à cette chose-là.
Ah, c'est là-dessus, là?
Oh. Just une seconde pour s'éteindre.
Il va y avoir plus qu'une photo en même temps.
Oui, on a trois photos, là. Ça va s'élever tout seul. So, bonjour tout le monde. Madame et maire, ça dit mon nom est Sylvain Lagassez, président... Pas dans le micro.
Tu dis tu es président?
Non, 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 c'est ça, non. J'étais off. Oui, mon nom est Sylvain Lagassez, président du comité du centre-ville, en fond, le DBRC en anglais, Downtown Revitalization Corporation. Juste un petit rappel pour ceux qui sont habitués voir Catherine. Catherine dans vacances, c'est moi qui file une bourre elle. Le DBRC est un organisme qui a le but de... Ça, c'est un rebelle... Ben... Un regroupement qui collecte des fonds à travers une levée sur les taxes de certains propriétaires au centre-ville, surtout les propriétaires commerciaux, essentiellement tous les bâtiments qui sont... Qui ont une entreprise ou qui sont loués, les entreprises, tout sur qu'est-ce qui est du bâtiment présentiel, essentiellement. Ce argent-là, avec notre budget qui est approuvé à chaque année, est mis vers des projets de revitalisation. On trouve comme plusieurs choses qui est faites au centre-ville. Puis, on essaie tout le temps d'améliorer les choses. Ce projet ici, qu'on vient vous présenter, est quelque chose qu'on a eu l'accès du financement à travers de la province. Il y a quelques mois, on a fait une demande de financement pour installer des lettres qui disent essentiellement... Au début, c'était "I heard Bathurst," on est allé avec "heard Bathurst" pour soigner un petit peu plus respectueux les langues des deux côtés. C'est ça, j'aurais des notes que Catherine m'a faites parce que sinon, elle va me chialer. C'est qu'on a finalement reçu le financement pour la fabrication et l'installation de ces lettres-là. On avait deux choix qu'on a regardés. Ben, il y a plusieurs choix au début, là, de localisation, on a éliminé quelques uns, quelques-unes avant de venir ici, en travaillant avec... Il y a deux, Daniel McLaughlin, puis Matt Abernathy, qui n'est pas ici. Mais nous, on a... Catherine nous a rencontrés, on a essayé de short-lister les options qui seraient disponibles. Il nous en reste deux, de celles-là que vous avez à l'écran, qui seraient essentiellement l'entrée du centre-ville, le long du petit sentier qui connecte le sentier du casseway puis le trottoir de la ville. Ça, c'est notre option préférée. Il reste une autre option aussi, je ne sais pas... Deuxième option. Qui serait ici, là, qui serait l'entrée du waterfront, disons, à peu près où qu'on met les balsous de fond et le pont dans le Harvest Fest, donc le waterfront install. Vraiment, on préfère l'autre option. Le seul hic, la dernière chose qu'il nous reste à vérifier, c'est théoriquement l'eau terrain appartient au ministère des Transports et Infrastructure. So on attend de figurer c'est qui il faut contacter là-bas pour avoir une permission. Si ça s'assasse, idéalement, il sera installé là. Sinon, ça, c'est le deuxième choix, puis je crois que c'est déjà été discuté avec la ville pour l'installation. Juste pour votre information, on a déjà fait communication avec the power, the diligence pour faire sûr qu'il n'y ait pas de fils qui sont enterrés là. Dans les deux cas, il y en a pas. Il y avait un eau terrain, puis on était comme pas sûrs, on l'a éliminé, justement, pour cette raison-là. Ce qui nous reste juste à confirmer où ça va aller, puis après ça, on va procéder à la fabrication puis l'installation, de cette installation d'emballissage pour le centre-ville. Dans le fond, il y a pas de demande. Juste une présentation à titre d'information, notre financement qu'on a reçu, qui est de l'ordre de près de vingt mille dollars, va payer pour cette installation-là. Juste pour le tient au courant, puis c'est ça. Je pose des questions.
Quand j'avais eu l'écho, j'ai eu un écoute Catherine, là, je vous compte pas de mensonge. J'étais tellement excitée, je me rappelle, l'an dernier, quand j'étais à Lyon, ils ont fait la même chose. Puis, c'était incroyable, tous les gens qui arrêtent pour des photos touristiques. Tu te places, il y en avait qui étaient assis comme sur le lion, entre le haut, tout le monde s'assisait dedans. Ça fait vraiment beau, puis c'est visuel, et côté touristique, ça va créer beaucoup de gens qui vont vouloir s'installer d'à côté. Yves-Pierre Anderson? Vous avez quelques questions? Excusez-moi.
I love this idea. It's about time something was going there, and I like it, like coming off the bridge.
Yeah, ideally, that's the site we're looking for. I'll be completely honest, like, down the road, well, we might look at having another one, like, on the other side of downtown, coming in from, you know, from the east side. And maybe from south eventually, depending what we're starting with, this one, obviously.
When would you expect, Sylvain, that they'd be able to install?
Well, it has to be done this summer, so we're just waiting on figuring out the DTI. Like, you know, who do we contact to get permission to do that? We're ready, we got essentially a contract ready to go for fabrication. We can't fabricate it right now, because depending on where it goes, it's scaled differently, right? It might be a little bit higher or lower, so we want that ratio, I guess, of letters to width. And depending where it goes, it needs to be built to suit. So it's gonna be screw piles screwed down and just a steel letter bolted to those screw piles, and then everything painted with marine grade enamel that should last a few years.
Any possibility it'd be installed this summer or no?
Oh, yeah, that's the plan. Yeah, we like to get it done this summer. Yep.
How high would the letters be, roughly?
Well, again, that's depending on where they are. Roughly about person height, I guess.
Fantastic, great idea.
On est allumé un peu partout. Counselor Willett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is it gonna be eliminated or...
No, it's just a dummy structure. There's no lights, no power, no nothing. Yep.
We'll put a spotlight in front of it.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe later, but for now, we're keeping it simple, right?
Yeah. Counselor Burnett?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. I like it real well. Is it winter friendly? Is it winter friendly that we... Where we get all that snow that comes around?
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll see. I mean, it's gonna be high enough. I mean, like it or not, the snowplow is probably gonna throw something on it there, but anyways, we'll see what happens. We might have to touch it up next year. We'll take care of that, so anyways. I mean, there's not... Unless we put it really, really high, we'll see.
I'd really like to see one when you come off of King Avenue, come off of the bypass, right there in that side hill.
Yeah, that'd be great. Actually, we can make that one a lot bigger.
Yeah, would be fantastic.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah. Welcome to Hollywood. Same thing.
We'll start with this one, then we'll go knock in for money for the next one.
Come knocking for money at the city, yeah, because it'll be outside the DBRC.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah. And if you wanna steal our idea, by all means, go.
Mr. McLaughlin, were you lit up while...
It was the fire department and engineering department met regarding this proposal. It's agreed a very, very nice sign. The only thing, we like to be sure that it's salt-proof, because in winter time, there is lots of salt on downtown, and we have some issue that if sun is too close, this material that gonna be rustproof, and we're gonna be sure that we're gonna work for the visibility when people are getting out the waterfront for visibility. But other than that, we don't have any issue. Other than DOT property, the committee will have to deal with DOT.
Yeah, we'll have to work that out. And like I said, the plan is to use it some sort of rain grade enamel. Fabricators are more used to it, similar to what you build like a steel structure at the marina or something that sees heavy salt. And again, like, you know, nothing lasts forever, and in five years, you know, we need to touch it up, or we'll send someone to touch it up.
So you don't have a contact at DTI yet?
Not right now. We're trying to figure that out.
Okay, all right. No, don't do that. Don't do that. Don't do that. No, don't do that. Don't do that. I'll help you find contact. All right, I'll look into it.
It should be fine. I'm not too worried. All right, thank you.
Merci beaucoup, Sis. I know, ma cadrice is like red. Too much sun? Or too much Anderson? All right. La deuxième présentation, c'est Commission du Centre Aquatique de Bathurst par le président Daniel Doucet.
All right.
Hi, everyone.
Put that down a little bit. I'm a little shorter. We're actually gonna co-present, so I have Roxanne here as well that's gonna present, and we're gonna present our members this evening. So again, my name is Daniel Doucet. I'm president of the Bathurst Aquatic Commission, and we're gonna ask all of our members to actually come up and present themselves as we go, as we go on in this presentation. So I already did mine here, but the only little thing, I'm also a principal, as most of you know, of Parkwood Knights Elementary School, and I have three kids, two of which attend the aquatic center mostly every day because they're on the swim team. So then we have...
Bonjour, ma telle Joannie Chalifaud. Je travaille sous social pour Vitalité. Je suis nageuse. J'ai une petite fille de trois ans qui nage depuis avant même qu'elle ait son premier anniversaire. Puis, moi, j'ai comme projet de passer mon cours de sauveteur. J'aimerais offrir des cours de nage aux gens qui ont eu des traumatres avec l'eau, qui ont des phobies de l'eau. Donc, c'est pas fort dans la région, j'aimerais ça l'offrir, surtout qu'on a une belle plage, right? L'Abbe des Chaleurs, so c'est un service j'aimerais offrir dans la région. C'est pour ça je suis sur la commission. Bonjour.
Bonsoir, mon nom est Roxane Perron-Fort. Je suis secrétaire de la commission, également directrice à l'école La Croisée de Robertville. Puis, je suis investie dans le projet puisque justement, j'ai deux enfants, un de cinq ans, un de neuf ans. Mon garçon de neuf ans a une passion pour la natation, est sur l'équipe de natation BLAST, et mon petit garçon de cinq ans adore nager aussi au centre aquatique.
Bonsoir, Francesco Vigionnet. J'étais là le mois dernier pour une autre présentation.
I know you.
It's me. J'espère que à la troisième venue, j'aurai un cadeau quand même. Je suis directeur de l'association musicale. Je nage beaucoup dans le passé. Je vais me remettre bientôt. Je suis content de faire partie de cette équipe, et j'accorde beaucoup d'importance à la natation. Et c'est bien fait. Merci.
Salut. Moi, c'est Kevin Benoît. Je suis thérapeute respiratoire à l'hôpital Région en Chaleur. Puis, je fais partie de la commission parce que j'ai nagé pendant douze, treize ans dans l'équipe de nage. J'ai travaillé à l'apicine pendant longtemps aussi, puis j'ai quand même assez d'intérêt dans ce centre-là. J'ai une jeune enfance aussi, puis ce qu'elle pourrait... Nage, ça serait pas bien.
La personne que je présente ce soir, évidemment, vous voyez Joannie également à l'écran. Heureusement, Joannie a pu se libérer ce soir pour être avec nous. Et je vous présente aussi Veronique Pro, qui est directrice du service de l'urbanisme pour la CAC Chaleur. Puis, Veronique nage depuis l'âge de six ans. Elle a également été moniteur et sauveteur pendant pratiquement dix ans. Puis, elle s'entraîne pour un triathlon. Malheureusement, elle est en dehors du pays présentement, donc elle ne peut être avec nous ce soir.
All right, so I'm gonna start with the steps that we have undertaken. First of all, we were formed on March 21st, 2023, and we met about six times. And that's not counting emails and the phone calls or the subcommittees, because we'll talk a little bit further about the general manager position as well that we've kind of worked on. So that's definitely something we've done over the last couple of months. We started to review a number of documents, including the financials, sorry, documents, and documents pertaining to managerial repairs to the pool and daycare. So we're still looking at those documents. We're getting more documents as we have every meeting, so we're definitely underway in reviewing those. We did create an organizational chart to more like understand the flow of the aquatic center. It's still under development, but it is in the process definitely of being created. We created a job posting in June. I'm gonna say June 15... Or June 1st is when we posted it, for the jet... For our new general manager. And we do have potential candidates, and we're currently reviewing the candidates at this time as well. And lastly, we helped re-establish lifeguard service at Yawal Beach for the summer, and I believe that started today.
Good. That's good news.
Évidemment, avec une nouvelle commission, comme la nôtre, vient des défis. On a plusieurs défis. On en a élaboré trois ce soir. Le premier étant que nous sommes une toute nouvelle commission. Ce qui veut dire qu'il y a aucun membre de la commission présentement qui était là auparavant. En soi, ce n'est pas nécessairement un défi d'avoir toute nouvelle commission. Comme vous pouvez voir, il y a des gens qui ont de très belles forces sur la commission et qui peut amener beaucoup justement la commission. Mais nous avons tout à apprendre, parce qu'il y a personne qui siège présentement sur la commission qui peut nous donner l'information dont on a besoin. Donc, des fois, ça prend plus longtemps à voir l'information dont on a besoin pour aller de l'avant avec nos projets. On a aussi une infrastructure qui est vieillissante. On se le cachera pas, tout le monde le sait. Donc, dans le fond, tout de suite, on est en train de travailler à un listing de réparations pour être capable de prioriser quelles réparations sont les plus importantes à faire le plus rapidement possible pour garder notre infrastructure à jour, puis nager et pouvoir garder les enfants à l'intérieur. Puis, le dernier de nos défis, c'est entrer en fonction le 21 mars, et puis nous avions pas de directeur général puisque le poste est présentement vacant. Donc, c'est un gros défi puisque nous voulons justement combler cette position-là le plus vite possible, et à ce moment-là, on pourra déterminer un petit peu plus où on s'en va avec la commission, puis aussi avec les processus à mettre en place au centre aquatique.
So with that, though, we have a few visions or a few things we'd like to undertake in the next little while. Well, the first one, the priority one, as Roxanne said, we would like to hire a general manager, ideally before the end of summer if we can. As I had mentioned, we do have some prospects. We are looking at them right now. We're going to have a couple of conversations with some. So hopefully, by the end of summer, we will have someone in place. We're gonna tackle the finances, including creating some policies for checks and balances as well. And we are looking to start a fundraising campaign to cover the cost of repairs, but coupled with public sector partnerships and public sector grant programs as well. I know there's some grants that come out in the fall. Roxanne and I were chatting about that, because we do those for schools, so we're gonna look at those as the opportunity comes up.
Donc, c'est pas mal tout pour notre petite présentation. Donc, le but ce soir était de se présenter, vous démontrer un peu où on s'en va et où on était quand on nous a commencé seulement le 21 mars dernier. Nous sommes ouverts à vos questions. Nous sommes une commission qui sont très transparentes, donc vous pouvez nous envoyer vos questions par courriel. Vous pouvez également nous appeler. On va répondre aux meilleures de notre connaissance. On croit comme commission que nous sommes très solides, mais nous croyons aussi qu'en travaillant ensemble avec vous, c'est comme ce qu'on va faire pour avancer. Donc, merci beaucoup.
On est allumé un peu partout. First of all, thank you for, you know, volunteering. I know that you have met quite a few times in such a short period of time. So you're thinking about, you know, April, May, June. So you're meeting almost every two weeks, and this is all volunteer work. And I hear that your meetings can go quite long. So as parents with young children and everything else, that demands quite a commitment. So thank you, and thank you for coming to do a presentation to give us an update on how things are going. And if you are gonna do any fundraising, I am volunteering. Let me know. I will do everything I can to help. I believe in the pool, and I think we need to keep the pool open. You know, and it is a lot of work for you, especially coming in and there's no board members from the past year, so you have to try to understand everything. All right, so Counselor Willett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for taking this on. It's... I know it's not gonna be easy, because it's like going canoeing with a roll of gorilla tape with a canoe full of holes, but, you know, we gotta... I guess we gotta try to keep it going till we do get a new facility in, in the city. So basically, it'll be a great learning curve for everybody on the board to get to manage, and it'll be easier when we do have a new facility to get going and to work with. So the only thing I can say is thank you for taking this on, and we're here to help you as much as we can, so.
Thank you. Conseiller Leblanc?
Merci, Madame la maire. Merci, Daniel, de la présentation. En passant, Daniel a été le premier entraîneur d'un nage à ma fille dans compétitive, en tout cas. Fait que merci pour toutes ces belles années-là.
Hé, je coach encore.
Écoute, moi, pour moi, l'APSCIN, c'est un service essentiel de notre ville, sincèrement. Ça fait que c'est un grand merci à tous vous autres d'avoir entrepris ce défi. J'ai siéger avant de conseiller l'ACIS sur cette board-là, puis vous avez tout un défi devant vous autres, mais je pense que c'est un défi qui est très fars. Tu sais, c'est quoi que ça prend de la structure? Et puis je pense que vous êtes les bonnes personnes, en tout cas, je sais que vous êtes l'idée pour des bonnes personnes pour pour faire ça et incluant mon collègue Steven Legacy, ça fait que moi, je vais vous dire que vous avez mon entier, mon support en entier tel que Lamarrès. Continuez votre excellent travail, merci d'avoir amené nous le montrer et quand ça va être le temps pour des bénévoles comme Lamarrès, appelez-moi.
Merci beaucoup.
Merci.
Councilor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to welcome all the new commission members, thanks for putting your names forward, I know it's a big challenge. It's all new, it's gonna take some time, you can't get from here to there in five minutes. I think most of us realize that, but I think you have a good solid plan, a vision for the pool for now and for the future, so that's really great to see, so thank you to all, thanks everybody for being here, nice to meet you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Burnett?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, thanks for your presentation, thanks to all of you for taking us on as champions for the the pool. As a grandfather, every time I get my grandkids here, we go to the pool and we were there last weekend and there was a lot of kids there, there's a lot of people having a good time swimming and playing in the pool. But, you know, it made me think that there's a lot of kids who are still missing that aren't there. And I my my street now has become very popular with young kids biking up and down and around and we took a couple of neighbors' kids and they hadn't been there. So it'd be some challenge for you to reach out and try to get these kids in the water and try to get them into one of the best exercises there is. So again, my granddaughter, when she she's from Moncton and when she was in the pool, all of a sudden she was talking to a couple of girls and I said, who were you talking to there? She said, oh, one of my classmates from DAP. So there's people visiting older folks like me here with their grandkids and and it's a great activity to pass a couple hours away with them, you know, so again, maybe we can reach out and try to get that crowd and get them there, thank you.
No, I think that's a good idea, I know they have a like a Facebook page for the Bathers Aquatic Center, maybe pushing that further and doing a bit of publicity might be a good idea, for sure.
Good, thank you very much, merci.
Merci, thank you.
Oh, oh, hold on, Deputy Mayor Anderson? Sorry, Deputy Anderson, I lost you in the corner.
I just have I just have a couple of questions that I'm that I'm gonna bring up tonight. I know you guys are really new on the commission and I know it's not easy being thrown into the fire because you've basically been thrown into the fire and I get that. I'm just questioning like positions that you have within the facility now, like, because I can see there's, well, I knew the the manager's position obviously is vacant. We have a program coordinator, supervisor, plus the administrative assistant. Are all three of those other positions filled? Is there somebody working in all three of those positions?
Yes, they are currently, yeah. The program coordinators, like, it depends which program, because there's the aquatic program coordinators, so that would be shared by two people currently.
Okay.
And they each kind of take half of the hours that are required to do the aquatics coordinator position and then we have a daycare coordinator as well.
Okay, and have you looked? Because I know there's been questions about, like, because of the financial implication as well, separating the daycare from the pool.
Yes, we are in the process of looking into that for sure.
So nothing has been done in relation to like staffing or the daycare or any, like, it's still, everything is still status quo from, say, first fiscal?
Currently, yes, it is still status quo, but we like, we had a conversation at our last meeting that we're gonna bring out at our next meeting to start the process of looking at having two distinct, like, the Bathers Aquatic Center and the daycare.
Yeah, it needs to be, that needs to be separated. One more question, I have a question I had in regarding the something I have here, there's there's other payroll expenses that's budgeted for ninety-seven thousand dollars, what does that entail, do you know?
So we are, as what as we had said, we're reviewing the documents right now, we're starting to get some information that we need so to pinpoint exactly everything at this point in time, we wouldn't be able to say, but we are definitely getting the information as we're asking for it.
How are you getting it? Through who, through the staff that's there now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay, Councilor Legacy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry about that, every time someone, oh, we have another one there, okay, so you're, just go back, we have a few more.
No, I just wanted to say that I'm also in the same boat, that we are all brand new on this board, but I'm really optimistic with the people around the table and what I've been hearing. It's a lot of positive and there's a lot of looking toward the futures and trying to get things done, but there is a lot to undertake, so the main priority right now was that general manager position because that's kind of where everything will trickle down from, we need to have the direction that we want before we can really start diving into the rest of it. But I do have full confidence in the board, as is, I'm really happy to be part of it, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Councilor Honduras?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just gonna repeat everybody's comments here, thank you for taking this on. I was the city liaison back in two thousand sixteen when we first got elected to this municipal issue. This has been a concern and a challenge since day one, it's been ongoing, we know, plus if we look at the future, we want, you know, a new building. So it's 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 tough for us, we we've been trying to see what we can do, much more than what we're already doing to help you guys out and it's just very difficult for us right now. I think we wait and see what you know, general manager, have a good crack at the books and then come back and see us. For your fundraising, reach out to your service clubs, the Kinsman Club, the Rotary, the Richelieu. There's a whole bunch of people out there that have the community's greatest needs at heart and they would gladly help. So make sure that, and these presentations have to go out to more than just Bathers because if you look at your your users, it's it's more people from the outside that come in to use our pool, so maybe this presentation of your committee to our our sisters and next door in Belbe would be a good idea too to give them an idea of what and what where you're headed, so you know, you have your work cut out for you. City council is behind you, for sure, but we're limited to what we can do above and beyond what we're already doing now. So rest assured that we won't let you high and dry, but we need to make sure that it's feasible for everybody, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, so we're we're there to back you up, you know, we know and we understand and we appreciate you coming in and taking on this this new venture, I'm going to say, as a volunteer. And yeah, the the city, we have to keep the aquatic center open and we know that this will be a rough patch for this year and then going into next year and then be able to have it working better. And, you know, a lot of doctors that I've spoken to have told me that you can't close the pool. So we'd be knocking at their doors to helping to help with the volunteer and for donation as well, so. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Donc, on va sauter la section trois. Madame, la graffiaire, on est rendu au comité consultatif en matière d'urbanisme, proposition d'un nouveau membre. Planning Advisory Committee, proposal of new member. Who do I go to? Is it Mr. McLaughlin or for you? Oh, it's graffiaire, it says clerk. It does say, say the clerk.
So there is currently two vacancies on the planning advisory committee. And we have luckily two people who have put their name forth who are interested in filling the positions. Our first candidate is Mr. John Luce, he is recently retired and living in Bathers, he's looking to give back to the community. He worked for Service New Brunswick for over thirty years where he did property mapping for assessment purposes and performed inspections, so he's pretty well versed in in that area. Our second applicant is Mr. Stefan Thomas, and Mr. Thomas resides in North Tedigosh, which makes him a new resident of the city due to the reform. With his analytical approach to decision-making and his wide background, he believes he can bring a new perspective. He's also sat on multiple committees in multiple roles. So if everybody's in agreeance, we'll be able to bring that to the next meeting next week to have a resolution done.
Ballot or ballot or, no, we need two positions?
We need two positions, so two positions are, would be full.
Great to see somebody from the new ward coming.
I know, that's that's what's great, it's not, absolutely, okay, good, we're bringing it next week. Policy review, new policies, five point one one. Twenty twenty-three's d'ajour two policy on attending municipal related conferences, board committees and commission professional development and social activities that we had talked about. Monsieur Laplante, est-ce que je vais avec toi?
Oui, merci, Madame Lamarrès. On avait amené cette proposition de politique au conseil, à une réunion précédente. Il y a des commentaires qui avaient été faits par les membres du conseil comme quoi on voulait essayer d'élargir un peu le nombre de de conseillers qui pouvaient participer aux réunions, donc on a pris ces commentaires-là en considération puis on a apporté des modifications pour votre considération. Donc, la politique a été modifiée ou la proposition de politique juste pour permettre aux membres du conseil qui choisissent d'assister aux assemblées générales annuelles soit de la FCM, de l'Association des Cités du Nouveau Brunswick, de la FMB ou de l'UMNB, l'Union des Municipalités d'y participer, puis encore le montant discrétional de deux mille cinq cents dollars par membre du conseil qui se rajouterait à ça. Donc, on pense que ça reflète bien les commentaires qu'ont été apportés. Si ça vous convient, on pourra l'amener à la réunion publique de la semaine prochaine.
Any questions? Everybody okay with it? Had an opportunity to read it, review it? Oh, Councilor Legacy?
Yeah, I I know at the last meeting, I was definitely on my own on this and I would propose a motion to table this until the budget discussions, as this is a budget item, it will affect how much we have to go towards other endeavors and I don't like the idea of doing standalone budget items for discussion, so I propose we table it until we bring up the budget.
All right, I would need someone to...
There's no resolutions really at...
There's no resolutions tonight, so...
No, but you were saying to bring it back at next meeting, so...
So next Monday when we bring it in, you can request the table?
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, all right. Perfect. Well, this meeting is adjourned, ceci est le levé de la séance, merci d'être avec nous, bonne soirée.